Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of Somersville City Council on this 24th day of October 2022. I'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening and get right into tonight's agenda. The first item on the agenda would be consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on October 10th of 2022. Okay, council, we got a first and a second. The motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they were presented? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Amy, anybody signed up over there for public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. The next item would be approval of a Family Awareness Month resolution. The resolution is as follows. Whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, F C A M C, is to increase awareness on the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. And whereas the mission of the F C A M C is fueled by the desire to create awareness and change the in the family court system for the conservatively estimated 58,000 children a year ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents while honoring the hundreds of children who have been reported as murdered during visitation with a dangerous parent. And whereas the mission of the F C A M C is to increase awareness on the importance of empirically based education and training on domestic violence and child abuse, including emotional, psychological, physical, and sexual abuse, as well as childhood trauma, cohesive control, coercive control.
Coercive.
Okay, say that for me.
Coercive.
Coercive. There we go. Coercive control and post-separation abuse for judges and all professionals working on cases within the family court system. And whereas the mission of the F C A M C is to increase awareness on the importance of using scientifically valid evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety, effectiveness, and therapeutic value. And whereas the mission of the F C A M C is to educate judges and other family court professionals on evidence-based, peer-reviewed research. Such research is critical, is a critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. This research includes adverse childhood experiences, A C Es, study, co-principled investigator, I would not say all that, child custody educator beliefs about domestic abuse allegations sponsored by the National Institute of Justice and child custody outcomes in cases involving parental alienation and abuse allegations sponsored by the National Institute of Justice. Now therefore, I, Robert L. Schaefer hereby declare the month of November to be Family Court Awareness Month on this 24th day of October 2022. So anyway, resolution, I'll move for approval.
So move for it.
Got a first and a second. Having a first and a second. Any questions? Any additions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Resolution so passes. Okay, the next item is approval authorization of a bank account for the city of Somersville Stormwater C D B G Mint Grant. And joining us tonight by Zoom is Amanda Smar from Region 4 Planning and Development. So Amanda, the floor is yours.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you for letting us join by Zoom this evening. So the C D B G Mint Stormwater Project with the city of Somersville, one of the requirements to go through the process to be able to draw the funds down and pay all the contractors and the bills, things like that, would be a formal bank account set up for the project funds to flow through. So that's what this request is, is to just set this up, get one step closer to getting towards the construction of the project. Right now, the project is in design, the engineer, the engineer scratcher, and they're going through the permitting and things that they would need to go through to get the environmental clearance needed for construction.
Okay. Just for listeners and council, as a reminder, this project is the Stormwater Project on Kentucky Road. So this is to open the account, which is required. It has to be its own account for inbound and outbound funds. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, I love it.
We have a first and a second. Council, do you have any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Have a good evening. Council, the next item on the agenda would be approval to sell by sealed bid, the list of items that has been provided to you, which is a 1987 International Dump Truck, a 1991 Komatsu W A 120 Wheel Loader, and vehicle parts, which is a 1993 3203 P R Auto Crane, and then a 2019 Dodge Ram Long Wheel Base Truck Bed with tailgate. Entertain a motion.
So move.
We got a first and a second. Council, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have two questions. When is the sale date and how are you doing that?
Yeah, so it'll all be sealed bid. It'll all be that process. We have to advertise the two weeks. So I'm going to say that with your approval tonight, the advertising would go in. I don't know that it's ready to go in tomorrow's paper, so I'm going to guess that it'll go in, and this is a guess, Mike, I can give you the exact, but I'm going to guess that it's going to be in the week of October 31st and the week of November 7th, and the bid opening date would be the week of November 14th.
Okay. And how would one go about looking at reviewing that equipment if they were going to ask their?
The advertisement will give all the details and location because some of it's located at the city garage and some of it's located at the old state garage.
I understand that.
Yeah, but there will be a contact in there for you to call and you can get an appointment to look at what you want to see.
All right.
Yep. Yeah, and all that will be in the advertising in the paper. Okay, any other questions? Okay. We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Council, as you see, we got another settlement participation form in the settlement that we, the city of Somersville, are involved with. This is Jensen, formerly known as J and J. So as it is, it's another settlement that's going into the big conglomerate pool of money that's being collected through the attorney general's office. So we need approval for us to be a part of this. Actually, what I need you to do is approve me to sign the document, but same thing. We're approving the settlement participation form.
Move to approve.
First.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Council, I apologize if this next document was not in your packet. As you know, I always try to get them out to you in your packet, so I will carefully go through this, and if you have any questions, I'll certainly entertain them. So what I would like to do is to correctly do it, we'll put it in the form of a motion as the proposed budget revision number two, and then in the discussion, I will go through it detail by detail with you. So I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Have a first and a second. The document reads as follows. The unaside balance carryforward is increasing now another $280,000, $280, $29. Let me see if I can get that right here. It's been a long day. So it brings our total carryforward from last year to $2.4 million, $37,052. So how are we going to allocate this? Okay, then we also have an anticipated increase in hotel motel. So let's, we're doing the revenue side first. Our hotel motel revenue, we're bumping it up from 450 to 500. Federal government grants, our COC grant money, we're putting in there, which is $47,250. Final year of a three-year award. And then miscellaneous revenue, we're adding $45,000 because we're in a partnership with our agreement with Ray Hall. This is where all the money comes in. All the money is sent to us from all the individuals helping pay that bill, and then, of course, we turn around and pay him the bill. So he's actually paid by us one bill. Everybody else, we invoice and collect the money. So this is the line item that we run it through miscellaneous revenue. So totally, we collect from others $45,000. Remember, he is on retainer for $7,500 a month is what we're paying him. So then we go on down to budget expenditures, council contributions. We're asking, we're asking for another $50,000 for the Nicholas County Airport Authority. I'm asking you to give $10,000 to the Somersville Area Chamber of Commerce, put $2,000 into the building commission expense, and that $2,000 is actually to cover the cost, which it won't be, will not be $2,000. It's actually going to be probably $1,500 or a little less, but that's the cost for the two properties we're selling. There was $1,000 that we have to pay that you pay the auctioneer right away upfront, and then we also pay for the advertising that was placed in the paper. So those three items bring our total council contributions to $120,000. Then I'm asking you to increase the contractual on the city attorney to $6,000, bringing the increase from the city on his retainer to $15,000. Asking that we lay $25,000 for a server and storage server. And this, I do not know, is an expenditure that will happen, but we're laying it in reserve because that server is getting some age on it. We have two servers. We replaced one last year, and this would be the funds to replace the second one. My guess is it will not happen this year, but if it needs to, it's here. Otherwise, you could see this same expenditure as a carryforward in the next fiscal year budget. City Hall contractual, we want to put, of course, this is where we spend the money. We actually pay as bills out of City Hall, which is $45,000. And then, of course, for the painting of the exterior of the building, $10,279. S C T V contractual, we're increasing it. I'm asking to increase it $3,500 for videographer pay. Police contractual, after we got the insurance all sorted out, that renews July 1st of the new fiscal year. Our police contractual, we need to pay the liability on police departments going up. Yes, you read that number right. We need that for the increase of the insurance for the police department, $25,000. So it brings the total police department contractual to $103,000. Mind you, there are other things, other expenses in that contractual. It's not all the insurance, but the insurance increase on the police department was $25,000. In the street department, increasing $50,000, bringing the total of the street department to $165,000. I'm asking to add another $50,000 to the paving. Right now, in the budget, we've got $150,000. I'm asking for another 50 to be added to bring it to $200,000. This is in the street department capital outlay. We've got a bid that we bid, would like to buy a box trailer for the street department. The bid is actually $10,500. So I'm asking to buy that box trailer for the street department. The central garage, to seal the roof and replace the gutters and paint the building, excuse me, $19,000, bringing the central garage capital outlay to $26,000. C V B contributions up top, you'll notice we increased the hotel motel $50,000. So by statute, we have to give 25 of that to the C V B. So we're increasing our give to the C V B from 225 to 250. That is $250,000. Then on the arena and conference center, which is the next outline item, council, as you remember previously, I talked to you about a personnel issue or hiring some personnel for the conference center, which they'll be hired through the city and contracted to the conference center. This is for that individual that I previously discussed with you, and that would be 50% because we're going to go after that individual come July, or I mean January 1st. So that's about half a year's compensation to hire the assistant director at the arena and conference center. So the $25,000, and then we're reclassing $5,000 from the contractual line item in there back to the personnel, adding personnel services to that budget, which has never been there before. And so that's just a move of $5,000, bringing that total line item to $30,000. Then the very next item, you can see that we're decreasing the contractual in the arena and conference center by $5,000 so that we have the $30,000 that we need in the personnel services line item. Brown Oaks Personal Services, the house manager pay increase, the original line item was budgeted at $15,000, an increase of $2,500, brings it to $17,500. Then the next item would be the Brown Oaks contractual. There was a contribution that was made to the Brown Oaks last year that did not get spent, so we're carrying that $1,000. We're adding that to the contractual of the Brown Oaks so that they can honorably spend that money as it was donated. And then, and then last but not least, of the $280,000, $29, I'm setting $104,000 in the contingency unallocated line item. Now questions?
Is there anything specific in the airport authority and the Somersville Chamber contributions?
Okay. Chuck, do you want to speak to the airport and then I'll speak to the chamber?
The airport authority, we are in the process of becoming eligible for our annual $150,000 allocation from the FAA. They have indicated to one of our attorneys that we also may be eligible for 2022 and 2023. Now, when that money's payable, I'm not sure. But in order to get us over that expense hump, to finish up with the ancillary expenses of putting up our new eight-bay hangar building out there, of which we've already received seven out of eight requests for hangar space, which is a great deal. And then that's just continuing expenses until we are allocating these other funds. Once those funds become available, then we're through asking for money. It'll become self-sufficient once again. Thank goodness. We're in the process of finalizing our contract. They have given us their final draft. We are in the process of answering their final proposal, of which we have five questions. You know, we don't entirely agree with one, two, three, four, and five. How do you respond to that? So hopefully, that'll go pretty quickly, and then we'll get this thing resolved. But we're right there, where we need to be, right on the verge of this thing taking off.
I'm excited about that.
Me too.
Okay, Chamber of Commerce. So I would say, because I don't remember exactly what the date was, but in the last fiscal year, the chamber came to me, the chamber board leadership came to me, said, Mayor, we need some help. And we had a hardcore sit-down meeting about the Chamber of Commerce. And I'm so happy to report that, you know, whenever that date was, which could have been clear back to the beginning of the last fiscal year, the chamber was struggling. And I could proudly say that the chamber board took the bull by the horns. They've hired a fantastic director, and the whole dynamics of the Chamber of Commerce and the impact that it has for our community is night and day difference than when they came and asked me for a contribution to help them operate the chamber. One of the issues with the Chamber of Commerce back then, and still kind of today as they rebuild, but I can tell you the reset has been magnificent. I mean, literally, I could start now and talk for the next 30 minutes on all the great things that have happened as a result of the executive director and the chamber board and the impact that they've made on our community. But I won't labor you with that, Jim. But in all sincerity, they needed help then, and I just told them, I just can't do it. In good faith, I can't go to the council and ask for this. Of course, now they have reset, and I'm telling you, I think it, night and day, is a different operation, and I think it has a positive impact that's helping the progression from a business sense for the businesses in our city. And so I told them then, if they would do what needed to be done, and I respectfully think they have, that I would come to this body and ask for a contribution to help them for operations. And that's exactly what that $10,000 is for. The only other thing I would say is we do have a member on council that frankly has stayed out of this ask part because of maybe the sensitivity of it, but Stevie LaRoe sits on the chamber. And Stevie, would you agree with my assessment of the chamber?
100%. Exactly. The new director does a fantastic job. She's out in the community and has a group. The board members have really strived, tried to make it self-sufficient, but it's still a difficult thing with what we're trying to do and build more in the community with the different events that we've had, not just the golf tournament, but the showcase was a big hit this year. We want to do that again, and that was the new director. That was her idea. Let's do this. And it was, I mean, there was a lot of people there. So we're hoping to keep having things like that happening. She has a lot of great ideas. The board is very happy with her. So yes, 100%.
Yeah, so you know, just like next Thursday at noon is the chamber lunch and learn, and I encourage you all to come to that. It's going to be, it's going to be the county, the city, the chamber, and the C V B giving updates on, you know, what's going on in their wheelhouse. And again, that's another driven piece of, I think, incredible get-togethers, these lunch and learns by the chamber that quite frankly have been well-received by the chamber members. So.
And that night will be the.
Annual Chamber Dinner.
So try to do.
At the arena and conference center.
But that'd be a great day. And that event, generally, we have a guest speaker. One of the things we tried to do is maybe do it to local and not have to, you know, save some money there, but be more of a social event. That way, you know, folks can come and talk to everybody there, and then I believe you're speaking there a little bit that way, is that correct?
I didn't know that. Don't tell me.
Don't hold it back. You're going to watch it. You always do.
Yeah, no, I, no, I mean, certainly I'm attending, but I had not seen.
That may be wrong.
Yeah, okay. No, but you know, the lunch and learn that day, I definitely have a segment in that to give a city update on what's happening with the city. So good question, you know, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's what I did, yeah. Good question, Jim, because, you know, yeah, I mean, and that's why it's where it is, and that's why it's now, because, I mean, seriously, I just, I'm so proud of the chamber because it truly is, in my opinion now, an asset to the community, its businesses. And stay, shop, and eat in Somersville because that's what the chamber's all about. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Recorder's report.
Just want to remind everybody, meeting this Thursday at 6:00. We'll be discussing the ATVs on the city streets. We'll have some pretty good dialogue on that Thursday night at 6:00. And we will have a Zoom meeting, correct? We're not having Zoom, that's right, okay.
Is this zoning planning?
This is planning and zoning, yes. Yes, it is.
And Gary, do you expect the side by side to stay on the streets?
I don't know where we'll go with that.
Because I haven't updated mine yet, but I want to, so I don't want to update it and then.
I know.
I won't be able to use.
A lot of people have questions about that.
Yes, a lot of questions about that.
I mean, I've seen a few lately on the street that weren't licensed.
Right.
Oh, you go down, county, county.
No, no. No, if you go down there.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. I don't have a feel for that. Do you? I don't have a feel for it.
We haven't discussed it.
We'll go, we can do some discussion Thursday night.
All I say is think about being a community of tomorrow, not yesterday. If we continue to live in yesterday, we're not going to be here tomorrow. And it's a state law now with their legal if they're licensed.
Right.
In my opinion, I just, I just think, and again, you know, I just, I'm one voice, one person. It's, you know, you bring people together, but I just constantly strive and encourage people, let's be a community of tomorrow, not yesterday. If we stay there, we won't be here tomorrow.
I'm sorry, I missed your point, Joe. Yes or no?
Oh, I'm saying, I mean, you know, I don't want to, and I'm not trying to usurp the process, but I certainly think that they're legal, and we do have some people that are running around in town because they think it's legal because they're, by law, state law, it's legal.
Well, we can't undo the state law, Kevin.
Yes.
We have part of this.
We do.
We did with the part of the state law. I didn't know that.
They left it up to the city municipalities to make their decisions.
I see.
But it's just a matter of you guys making an informed decision on what you want to allow or not allow, and then backing it up.
Have you, I saw the packet that I didn't get time. Is the state statute in the packet?
I believe it was, yes.
It is, okay. Because isn't the state statute that they can go on two-lane roads, but they can't go on?
Correct.
There's some restrictions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So like, they can't go on Route 19.
That's a road. Okay.
Yeah, they can't, you can't go on, but like 39 and Webster Road and 41, they can go on that, but they can't technically, and I don't know what the law is about crossing a four-lane road. But yeah, they can't run on Route 19, but certainly.
I've seen kids on the street, I've seen kids in the ditches, I mean, you know, just different places, and it, it's just something you just, you know, you guys make a decision, that's what we'll buy.
It's a dialogue that needs to be discussed, definitely.
Apparently Lowe's is clinging on you all approving that.
Who?
Lowe's. Are they in business now?
They got a lot of cars down there. They're trying to.
Oh, they do.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, anything else? Okay, let me move into the, to the marriage report. Counsel, I'm very excited to say that I was approached by First Energy to apply, and this would be their entire West Virginia footprint, to apply for a grant through them that's called Light Up Holiday Smiles. Had just about, from the time I was notified to the time the grant had to be filed, we had about a week. So I enlisted our grant writer, Anna Beth, and I cannot say enough about the stellar job she did. And we got our application in. I want to give credit where credit's due, the bulk of the work she did. So we had to designate a place, and then there were a lot of parameters within the grant that we had to fit and be able to serve and so on and so forth. I can tell you, we were up against some stiff competition, and it's $30,000. First Energy's coming in, they're hiring a contractor to build the light display, and we're going to put it in the park. And I've already been in contact, well, first of all, I was so excited when they called and said, city of Somersville, you won. And when you see the list of people that were, that we were up against, the cities and the, well, for example, Lindville University, we competed against, we pulled it off, and we get the $30,000 bought and paid-for light display by First Energy that we own when the season's over. So what we did is immediately I reached out to the park, went and told the county commission, we applied for it, so the grant and the prize. So the grant and the project is the city of Somersville. We're doing it in the park in partnership with the park. And then after this season, when it's over with, the, the display will stay with the park, and then they'll put it back up year after year. This year, a contractor is going to come in and build it and construct it. The other good thing of it is, is wherever we pick to put it in the park, and they're going to be coming in on a site visit real soon. The contractor's already been selected to come in and build it. If there's not power, First Energy puts power to it. So, you know, you don't have to worry about that. They're completely paying for it. Even to, there's a, there's an additional piece in the budget for the lighting ceremony. So details on all that are yet to come. When the lighting ceremony will be and how we'll pull it off, I've got ideas, but I don't want to say them publicly yet. But again, I just am absolutely thrilled that that $30,000 light display is going to be built here in, in our city at the Veterans Memorial Park. So.
Great job.
Yep, and, and, and kudos to Anna. Next, Governor's Energy Summit at Stonewall Jackson tomorrow. I'll be there. As a matter of fact, I got to be there at 10 o'clock tomorrow. I am speaking in the renewable energy part of the governor's summit. And quite frankly, I was a little bit excited that they reached out to the city of Somersville and its mayor to come and represent new renewable energy at the governor's summit. So you could imagine that I've put my package together, which I had to launch already so they could review. And I'll be representing the city of Somersville and our hydro plant tomorrow at the energy summit here in the great state of West Virginia. I also want to tell you in a big, exciting way, on October 12th, myself and Gary and Mark Matakovich, I always have a hard time saying his number, we appeared before the Home Rule Board. And of course, yours truly had to give a presentation. And gave the presentation, and it was absolutely not one question, and they took a vote and said, you're in. I will tell you, the comments that came after that were superb. And they said, we wish everybody's application would look like your application. Kudos to Mark, kudos to Cookie, and of course, the whole team, Gary, myself, everybody worked on it. But again, I want to give credit where credit's due. You know, there was a lot of work and, and, and hard work done on that by our attorney and Cookie, with ancillary stuff done by the rest of the team. So it was exciting. We're in. We are now officially a Home Rule City. So rest assured, in the month of November, you will see expedited a whole bunch of stuff that we have to have done by the end of this calendar year if we're going to be able to be in the tax hopper for the 1% sales tax July 1st of 2023. Our zip map, tax map, we did get confirmation that it and the ordinance have both been approved unofficially by the state tax office. So now it's just going through the, the, the required statute, things that we need to do here as a governing body to get the rest of that lined out. So it's in the hands of the city recorder. So Gary will be, there will be things on your very next agenda that we'll start dealing with, getting all this stuff in line so we're ready by the end of the calendar year. Because actually, just so you know, there's only three meetings left in this, in this calendar year, council meetings, two in November and one in December, because we will not be having the December 26th meeting that technically is the celebrated holiday because Christmas falls on a Sunday. So there will be no meeting on the 26th. So again, thanks to all of you for your support, and thanks to the entire team. We are officially a Home Rule, a Home Rule City in the state of West Virginia. Veterans Day ceremony and parade. This is very, very important. All of it has been moved to Saturday, November 12th. Veterans Day is actually Friday, November 11. The ceremony at the park will be Saturday, November 12th at 11:00 a.m. Then there will be a Veterans Day parade this year. The Army Band will be in the parade. Several high school bands will be in the parade. The National Guard Unit is marching in the parade. Folks, we're had, we're, we're up to have a spectacular, thanks to our area veterans organizations, a great Veterans Day parade and program on November 12th.
In town? In town?
Yes, the parade's going to be, because of the volume in the parade, we're going to run the Potato Festival route for the parade. And that's on, on Saturday, the 12th. Lineup is at 1 o'clock. The parade starts at 2 o'clock. They actually have the Army Band coming, several high school bands, the National Guard Unit, some equipment. It's, it's truly going to be a great Veterans Day program put on by the veterans. I just encourage people to come out and support it. Trick or treating and Safe Zone. Trick or treating in the entire county is October 31st, Halloween, which is a Monday, 6 to 8 p.m. So that's both trick or treating in the city and the Safe Zone at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center, which we do in partnership with First Energy and many, many local area businesses. The city of Somersville's Thanksgiving Dinner Luncheon is going to be on Thursday, November 17th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And this is, I got to stress, I want to really put some stress on this. Takeout are only going to be available for shut-ins. And actually, we'd like shut-ins to call the day before to the arena and conference center to get their, their reserved meal that they can pick up or be delivered. But it's very important, last year, we had businesses coming and getting large numbers of takeout meals, which we permitted because of the COVID. We just can't support that. We just can't support that. And we did last year, and really, what that does when we do that, that to-go process, it backs up the meals that we need to get to the shut-ins and even the people that show up at the conference center to get meals for shut-ins. So we want our businesses to allow their employees to come to the arena and conference center where we've got all kinds of room to socialize with your family, friends, coworkers, and all those. That's what the whole event's meant to be, is a time to get together, socialize, and be thankful for the season. The next thing I want to go over is next Tuesday, counsel. I finally got my meeting with the Office of the Assistant Secretary of the Army. So next Tuesday, I will be going to DC as I have a meeting, two scheduled meetings. The, the, the second and, and primary meeting for my visit is a meeting with the Office of the Assistant Secretary of the Army, which is to hopefully get some clarity and direction on the feasibility study that we've asked for on the issues that we've been at for decades to try to increase the generation of power by our hydro plant.
That's November 1st, right?
Yeah, that's next Tuesday, November 1st. So, and, and ideally, counsel, just so you know, my conversation tomorrow is going to be highlighting a lot of what we could do in the great state of, of West Virginia to support hydro and increase that as a resource in energy production. Although I still stand in favor for all of the other energy sources, wind, solar, of course, hydro, and then oil, gas, and coal. So, you know, we as a city support all of that. But truly, I think it's time for West Virginia to make a step forward and say, in an honorable way, we're going to recognize renewable energy. So that concludes the mayor's report. Any counsel reports? Okay, good news, counsel. We don't need the exec- oh, nope, 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 nope. I got one more thing. And actually, this was in my report, but I forgot. Okay, counsel, at the next meeting, at the next city council meeting, it will, this will be on your agenda. Here is the completed package for approval on the Somersville Reparational Complex. These are all of the legal documents that will be on the agenda for approval. It's like handing out Christmas presents.
It'll be good to begin with that.
Yes, yes. So counsel, Jim, I owe you an apology. I have been absolutely covered up. You sent me an email. I totally respect, you know, your email, and, and that's unlike me to not respond, and I apologize. Counsel, I tell you what, this will be on my radar. It will be on the next agenda, which is not till November 14th. All of this will be on the agenda for approval and passage. As a matter of fact, right now, I have a closing set up for the following day, November 15th at 1 o'clock, where we would actually close and purchase the property. I won't get into it tonight. There's a whole lot of positive stuff already going on. There's another thing that I'm absolutely excited about that could potentially be right around the corner that will be spectacular for this. But the first thing we got to do is, is get, get the property purchased. So these are all the documents that will be on the agenda for passage. I just wanted to get them in your hands tonight, and you've got plenty of time to review them. I promise you, if you send me an email or reach out to me, I will respond. Okay? With no counsel comments, we don't need an executive session, so the next item will be for a adjournment. Got a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you, counsel. Have a good evening.